And all the votes to bring that number down if you're not willing to hand it, but we can bring that number down.
Thank you, Tim. Is there a motion in the second? Have they made a motion yet?
I make a motion, we accept the contract subject to review by both parties. Is that the way you said it?
Review and acceptance by both parties of the city attorney's comments.
Okay, review and acceptance by both parties following the city attorney's comments.
Second.
Post your vote in a second. Hold on a minute, babe. Aye, aye. Those opposed?
I'm gonna say aye.
You want to oppose?
No, I'm not opposed.
Hold on a minute.
I didn't vote the first time when you said, I was still sitting there with each other. I'm very leery of the whole thing.
So is that it yet?
Uh, yes.
Yanis, thank you. Yanis just wrote. Yes, there is, uh...
One last thing.
Uh, Rick, you already made your presentation, you need to make some more.
Sorry.
Brandon, uh, Tim, you need to make a report. Okay, so at this point, we're gonna take some...
Oh, no, I'm sorry, I did.
I'm sorry.
We jumped in our little win. I just wanted to think out, and everybody helped out for everything we have, that definitely affects us. It helps us get the facilities, and also a lot of our national money out this Friday.
Thank you. All right, we now have a five-minute break, and then we have to come back. We have two things to do when we come back besides the zone report. We have, uh, both of those, uh, there's only one. Yes, please hold on. Yeah. Five minutes. My legs. Okay, we're, uh...
Thank you very much.
We're at the, uh, City Hall renovation.
Mayor and council, do you have in your package, um, this is the reports Pond put together involving the, um, three bids that were opened on 11:00 AM on August 7th. Three contractors submitted, um, bids in advance of the bid deadline. Each contractor submitted a bid with several options and alternatives. Pond evaluated the bids and chose alternatives such that prices could be compared for similar scope of services that met the needs of the city. Example, windows replacement instead of restored. According to the RFP, bids will be evaluated by a selection committee appointed by the city administrator, which must be composed of a minimum of three city employees. And then we would make a recommendation, um, to the commission. We have not done that because I'm bringing it to you before we go through that process because the, um, three bids we got, um, range from $1,206,074.75, The bidders submitted their bids in the format required and provided the necessary supporting documentation. Pond has reviewed the bids and checked them for accuracy. Based on their review, Nanoguard LLC has submitted the most favorable bid with the quickest estimated completion time, closest location to the site, and the lowest cost. We have reviewed the unit pricing submitted and find it to be fair and equitable in all aspects. However, Pond recommends that the selection committee review the bids and the alternatives to confirm that the alternative selected by Pond meets the city. Question I have for the mayor and council, in the 24-25 budget, not one penny was put in for city hall. So I don't know how we intend to pay $890,743.68 if we go with Nanoguard. We can talk all we want about grants going to the state or the federal government, but we've already been told unless we have skin in the game, we're not gonna get any money. So if we didn't put any money in for the budget, I don't know what you're gonna do with this, and I'm not sure if there's a value in staff going through and making a recommendation when, if we're not going to address the problem, then we should reject all bids and release all three bidders because they're just sitting and chomping at the bit, wanting to know when the council mission, the council is gonna make a decision. And even if you made a decision and picked Nanoguard, were we getting $980,000?
Exactly. Can we sell City Hall? Put it up for auction?
So the money we've put on redoing the roof to prevent any future or further damage doesn't count as part of the skin in the game for going to the state or any other process?
We could try, but I think $70,000 would be a far cry, um, with Barnard B. Webster.
Yeah.
Yeah, when I spoke with him, he had put in, um, a request from the state, I think it was two years ago, for $800,000 for windows. And he told me that the reason the governor rejected it because the city of Lake Elm didn't put a penny in for the request. We were just looking for money.
But now we did put some into it to solve part of the problem, now we're trying to address the rest of the problem. Because the first issue we had to do was to stop the intrusion of water from creating, making the problem worse, which we did by putting the roof on. So that's part of put skin in the game to help prevent it. Now we need to address the rest of it.
I think he was talking matching funds, like when I talked to him. He was talking, we need matching funds as far as skin in the game.
I'm giving you an opinion, I don't think $70,000 on, on almost a million dollar request is what they consider skin in the game.
Are we designated as an historical building?
No.
No.
It's old, it's old, but it's not classified as historical.
Because we never put it...
It's not registered.
They think it's, yeah, the state of the country.
The reason I ask that question because, um, our church was registered as a historical building, and we created it in the latest center. And, um, we were able to secure a quarter of a million dollars, so we began to renovate it, and it was a grant because we didn't have that money. So we had a grant of quarter of a million dollars, and just, uh, last year, the state gave us $500,000 because of the designation. The designation, just like any historical designation, it requires certain things to be able to be in place for that, that still gotta go to the check register.
But you invested $290,000.
No, we didn't invest anything. We didn't have the money when, when we...
Where did that money come from?
It came from the National Historical Society that we were party to, and that was Mark Schutterberg that got us to join that, the former mayor, Mark Schutterberg. And when we joined that, he put in an application for the National Historical Society, and they gave us the quarter of a million. The quarter of a million is what helped, um, pay for Rick Bassel's company to shore up the building. And that's kinda how we got to where we're at, and that's just another piece of...
Isn't it funny that former mayor, uh, Schutterberg, told you to get on the national registry, but didn't put City Hall on it?
That was...
How does that...
Well, that's another story.
Yeah.
There are pros and cons to the state historical register because then once you do go on there, the costs of repairs and whatever can go up dramatically because then they dictate that they want it restored to the way it was.
You were right on that the first part of this.
And you're limited on what you can put on it, with the windows and whatever, they want it to be as close to what it was.
I see your point, is that the first, the first grant we got was the National Historical Society, and then the second one that we got, which is $500,000, came directly from the state. And what the state did dictate, what we could put on, which windows we need. So we're still in that process of making that, you know, making whatever they're asking us for.
Mr. Lisa, have you ever made contact with the gentleman that Congressman Mills gave you this magnitude?
Yes, ma'am. I did immediately into that. We missed the cycle for the last go-round, so any money that would come from federal would have to come after the election. It would be a new symbol for the next fiscal year for the federal government. And even my contact with the gentleman that Mr. Mills put me in touch with indicated that we would gain much better support and likelihood in the sense that the city is showing its part in there. The congressman has indicated he would be supportive of funds going to that building. I'm just giving you the reality of getting 100% from the federal or the state government without us putting something in would be a little more of a challenge.
So that leaves us square with the government that we can't use.
Get used to these chairs.
Well, we'll step into what the process would be to get that designated to historical because I know Senator Horr is losing a lot of the building's made out of bond brick. And we got one of them. He only wants to put it in hotels because of wear and tear on it, had to tear it down out of the bottom brick.
Yes, sir. To do that, even that process of going through, we're gonna be at a point where these prices are only good, you know, for so long as, like, anything else going up. So, I mean, we have to do something with it. And again, I think if staff goes through, um, probably good chance that we would end up coming up with the same recommendation of Nanoguard, which is the $890,000. But them holding that while we deal with the state, see if we can get on its historical register, and then what advantages that may or may not provide to us and whether or not that opens up any funding, I think that's gonna negate the current bids.
Where is the possibility of us getting the employees out of that building? Because with this last bit of hurricane rain, uh, there's more mold in there now.
I don't know.
Maybe might be a good idea to have another mold inspection. I mean, we already know that shit's there, and it's, uh, per pot, per million, whatever that...
I think these three companies did that. I mean, that's, I think, that's where we got to that. I mean, I'm not saying we didn't have screen or whatever related to it, but I mean, with the building's not leaky, I'm not saying that doesn't create an environment that the mold can still grow. The fact that they were up there today, and to be honest, you could smell it a lot more than I smelled it in that, in that building. But I, I don't have an answer.
This is gonna wind up being a problem at some point.
Do you do a referendum and see if people just enter, you're willing to commit? And annual assessment on their homes to pay, to pay for your city hall?
Exactly.
Then you find out who really cares and who's willing to invest. How much is it worth? How much is the school worth?
Can some of this work be done a little at a time? Does it all have to be done at one time?
You can't take the mold out.
You have to shake it out.
This is only for the mold, though?
No, it's for tearing it out.
And it's all...
Right, but we can remove the mold this year, and put it back next year, right? We don't have to bite off $90,000 in one year.
When you begin to move this, this third, uh, building, to begin to renovate this, can't leave it in that state. You can't tear down the wall to get the mold out, you still now have an environmental, that should be, environment that should have to now correct. You have to build it back.
Right, I'm not suggesting we not correct it. What I'm saying is it doesn't even put back the pretty. We can still continue to use this for city hall meetings in there.
Have open rafters in the city hall.
No, we have our city hall meetings here, continue doing that, but we don't have to make it pretty in the chambers this year if we cannot afford to do so. It's just like when you're remodeling your home, and if you get halfway and you can't afford to make it pretty, but it's functional and it's not harmful anymore. That would, it would be a step towards fixing the issue instead of, oh, we're just not gonna do anything, we're gonna let the building rot and let our place in, in mold. That's crazy.
One of the things that we had, we had different, um, bids, and the bids had different depths that they get into the building to determine how far the mold went in. One, one company went in, I don't know, four feet, no, no, went in three feet, or whatever it was, they had to penetrate and disturb the mold. And then that made it basically, I don't say it's...
More air mold.
Make it more than exactly, just for, it becomes air mold. And right now, where we're sitting at, we're keeping the air conditioners on full blast, and that's creating in itself, uh, your air conditioner gives off water. So we're actually introducing water into the building by way of putting our air conditioners on. We, we were there yesterday, and the water, there's a pump in the basement, and it causes the air, and it pumps out the floor. And upstairs, like you see around those rafters there, there is mold falling from the ceiling.
Right, I don't think that I'm maybe not being clear. I understand what you're saying.
Is there a way that we can do it by doing it in a least of a time?
Right, so take out all of the mold. I think in order, in order to do that, we have to get everybody out of the building because you can't be in there all day with the mold.
You have to put up plastic screen partitions and everything to isolate the area from the rest of the building before they can start moving any of the...
I don't understand why you all are explaining the process to me, and again, and again, I'm sorry. I'm clear on the process, but what I don't think I'm clear on is the fact that we don't have to put the chambers back together to remove the mold. We can take out all of the...
The other part is, where do we wanna get the money to do that part of it? Because that's gonna be about a couple hundred thousand dollars, just to do that.
And if we're doing over remediation, we would have to move them out. They can't be in there.
Uh, yes, I'm, I'm understanding, I'm sorry.
Might as well make the address, Heather's, yeah. No, 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 Heather, you're very clever in terms of what you're asking. What you're asking, the question would be, is going back to Pond, these companies would be seeing, would they be willing to do a phasing, a phasing structure? The negative on that is, since not a penny was put in for 24-25, we don't have any money to start until 25-26, so these prices will probably be gone. But that may be something to discuss with them and say, is there a phasing schedule that could get this done? And I don't have that.
Because we have harbor funds.
You have some harbor funds in the church.
If we could put some skin in the game and go after with our new engineering for some of each other, then maybe we could start the process. That's what, that's where my train of thought is. I know, I know the process is, we have to do X, Y, and Z in order to get the same, or to remove all of the mold and everything. But what I'm wondering is, can we get to a point in that process where we can stop and get to the next budget season? That's where I'm...
Can I say something?
Yes, please.
You've gotta do one of this first. No matter what you do, you've gotta seal the outside. You sealed the roof, you got to seal the windows before you can tear down the car, you've got to seal the outside so it doesn't keep coming in. So that's your first major, what's it for? Windows.
And then we would have the roofs and the windows as skin in the game, and we have harbor funds that we've already talked about using for the purpose of, what was our amount of things?
175,000.
How much?
175,000.
We don't have a lot, because that would do like 400,000.
That's what I thought.
There are about 45,000 on exterior doors, and... Well, that's part of their bid along with everything else.
Yeah, you have to get that done first, then you can think about...
If you're talking about just windows alone, they'd probably charge more than 175,000.
And you can't turn the air conditioner off because it will zap places which is beyond control.
Yeah, you would have to get the bids once, we have the bids on our project, we don't have the right unless we're doing it right to break up. I understand. So they would have to go back and, and agree, we should, we do, because you got, you got mobilization costs. But the question, windows is 175, doors is about...
But those period windows are, those are so that they would be...
They say hurricane rated.
Hurricane rated?
Yeah.
Uh, there is a company that does make them, that's a period.
The point I was trying to make is that instead of doing nothing and allowing it to become an even larger issue, if we're able to break this into pieces, if it's possible, if it's allowed in phasing, if we can just do the windows now, if we can start working toward the goal, then maybe that is a better solution than doing nothing.
Then we have to go out with a different RFP on just replacing the windows and see what we get back on that cost. Then we need after that, need to go out with an RFP on putting some type of seal paint on the exterior of the building to see all the cracks and everything that are in the site.
You need to do the windows and doors and the outside totally, get that done, and then you can seal it up, and then...
And then, I agree with you saying, a little bit of time, but that's where you gotta start. Finish the shell. Get the outer part done, painted everything, move doors, everything, seal it up, then you can do it.
I'm much protecting the professional advice because, you know, I have, we have, on this board here, we all have limited expertise in that area. So what we asked for was a professional bid that gave us a round number for there. Each one was different. So for us now to come, and that makes more sense what you're saying, how functional is it to just take out one part at a time? What would be the cheapest part that would be able to allow us to get to the next stage? Without making it, without taking apart. That's what it required. You took one part, now you gotta take these other two.
That's how we did it. Part, now we gotta do another section.
Exactly.
So our first, our first thing is, we probably have to do a motion to reject these. Is that right? I don't know if I would reject them before.
Asking the staff to go back.
Yeah, go back to the staff and try to negotiate with them. To see that if we, if we wanted to do, we want to break this up into phases, and we want to do the exterior of the building first, and then use that to help us get the arco funds? Is this what I'm hearing? What would be, what would they recommend would be necessary for external windows, doors, painting on the exterior of the building, and what would be the prices of those? I don't think we have to go out for a whole new RFP. We went out with a RFP, we've got these people.
We can talk with these three.
Just talk to these three. And then if they come back and say, I'm not interested in doing that, or all of a sudden the price is double, or what, you know, windows are out there fifty thousand, then you may as well reject all the bids. But I wouldn't reject them all until she asks. I would go back to try to negotiate or give buy proposals for them on changing a little, a slightly modified. No, I'm, I'm okay with that. Is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Any motion for that?
Because it's got a bunch of.
It's justice. We need to have.
Was there?
We had cards.
There, sorry. Nancy, or, oh, Rod?
Yeah, Heather, I just want to know what the balance of the ARCA funds.
Oh, that's what it is.
Yeah, can you tell me what the amount that we have available?
I think it's estimated at eight hundred thousand.
There you go. I made a function of the ARCA. That's shit in the game.
Now, did you take two hundred thousand out of that?
Yes, your lead is correct. There's a hundred thousand in ARCA that is in the proposed budget, so that would reduce that down to seven hundred.
Well, I think that's.
That was for the trucks, right?
The back, the back trailer.
Back trailer, that's right.
Wouldn't that be skin in the game? Or something like that, wouldn't that be skin in the game, in the name?
Yeah, yeah, I won't argue that. I mean, in the sense, but talking some of the other issues and hurricane cleanup and some things from there. We may need that.
We've gotta do something with that building though too. So I'm, I don't know. I don't know why we just don't take five hundred of that and put it in the skin in the mold.
You guys set policies we're looking at.
I would say let's, let's wait on spending that until we know if we can phase it. If we can phase it, and we can only do two hundred to fifty thousand this year, then next year maybe we can, we'll have it in our budget, but let's get to that point.
The other thing, and then I agree with what you said. But the other problem is that every year that we put off, you know, those things, the price goes up and the mold grows and takes over.
But, but one thing that maybe could play, and it was, I think you all have said, is if we ended up with four hundred thousand dollars, five hundred thousand dollars in the game, that may be enough, then we turn right back and reach with the congressman and the state and do two avenues of, okay, we've got this nine hundred thousand dollar problem. We're willing to put four hundred thousand in.
Well, it's, we have both options.
Yeah, I would, I would play the game of going to the state and the feds. I mean, worse can happen, can you tell us now?
I think when you, we say have the skin in the game, in my mind, you're thinking that skin in the game means that you can bring something to either grant or a statement.
For us to be matching funds to get money from that.
Exactly. The, the skin in the game that we use in Boys' Girls Club is a company called Grant Finders. And they actually, because of the nature of what our Boys' Girls Club is for, they provided asset directions to grants that were, and the grants have come over every year. So there's a, there's an opening period with grants for available. And it's more than just deciding I'm gonna need a grant.
Right, but what we would go from here is what's called an earmark.
Earmark.
And that's where the congressman tucks a certain amount of money, you know, in a spending bill that would be next year and put, put that in. We would do the same thing with Tallahassee. We want to be Webster, say, okay, Barbie, we got turned down on the eight hundred thousand dollar windows and we had no money. We've now got a price of, so say nine hundred thousand for the building, we're willing to put four hundred in. Would you be willing to sponsor legislation? So that's an earmark, a state, and then we can do the same path with the federal side of these.
So that we don't keep picking this can, what can we do?
We don't have to act of spending the money until.
Right. Yeah, because if you start a project, you're not gonna get the money, meaning in there, you get that process. So why don't we do two things? First of all, you've asked if they can break it into pieces in a scale. So we could get that initial step, so we can see, you know, in terms of what's the short term. If they say no to that, and it's like, no, we gave you a full bid or what happened, then I can come back and we can have that discussion of, would you be willing to put X amount of dollars from ARCA into the pot so that then we can use that as our leverage with the state and the federal government?
Nancy?
Yeah, I just wanted to say I really like what Commissioner Ralich said. And I agree with these new ARCA funds and applying for grants simultaneously, and possibly even looking at getting a loan. If you get a loan, you have the ARCA funds, you have more leverage to go through and get it, get it all done. If you get the grant, you can pay back the loans. If, if that's something that is allowable to do, but it's a way to get it done, and like you said, you started it. They're not gonna come in and do everything in a month. It's gonna be pieced up anyway in the way that they do it. So that might be a great option, just to get it done and get us back in there in the next year.
That too is a good idea, because one of the things that we're looking to do is to leverage and pull a mortgage out on that two million dollar building. It has no mortgage on it. The building doesn't have a mortgage on it. Like, when you say loan, that's what I'm thinking about, where you get.
I, I think that's great, but I also, Mr. Gleason had mentioned recently, we, we own some properties. Maybe we could, you all could establish what you can get rid of and sell them and have some more cash for this project. It's a worthy project.
If it comes a central focus of where we need to, to, these assets that we have sitting around doing nothing could be turned into something that could benefit that building, then that takes a different perspective.
And that may be the point, but knowing what we just faced on the flood, selling some of that might not be advantageous because we may need it for part of our stormwater retention.
It's such a killer door. Okay.
So I, I got a direction to go back and see what we can do in reference to the piece deal. And then I can address that back from you all in terms of whether or not, whether or not they say they, you know, they can do that, or if all three say no, either you take us lump sum or not, and then if that's the case, then we can go back. And we can go back for pieces, and we can bid then for the windows and doors. We already have an idea on three there, and then we could start that process, still knowing that the general project is use ARCA, and that may help us then with the feds and the states, fed or the state government in a little form.
And we really should, because I'm in that building a lot. And we need to know what, what are the parameters to which we can continue to be in the building. As at some point, we're gonna reach a point of saturation.
That's how they do the air quality outside and the force of air quality inside. And it still depends on individuals and their respiratory systems and stuff. They can still be affected, even though the air quality inside is great, their respiratory system can still be affected.
Well, I think, because we are always being mindful of being liable for something for somebody who's very contagious. The Michael Walker, I mean, that's an extreme cough and musty air. That's an extreme, that's country we are.
So the direction I work with, historical requirements, what's pros and cons of doing that, and the other is the piece count. Is that a question?
And exploring the skin in the game aspect.
Three parts, sure.
Better than part of the.
Appreciate that.
Mayor, then we go to item G, which is the resolution we had. Explain the reason for the resolution. This just came out of calls this week at the county. The governor has put out a mandate that has said that on January twelfth, twenty twenty-five, every city and county will be cleaned up. And has dictated that if that requires cities and counties to work twenty-four seven, and landfills twenty-four seven, and vendors twenty-four seven, then that's gonna be dictated by the governor and the state. We were on a phone call today with the state emergency manager, and I will tell you, he was absolutely unsympathetic to any community involving public safety, people working at night. Their comment was, we build roads at night so you can turn around and rent lights. And they also told us, we don't care what you pay. If you have to raise your rates in order to attract the vendors, then you do so. And then you hope you get your money back from FEMA, because there is no money from the state of Florida. So the governor's made a mandate and has not provided one single penny to forty-five counties, and has dictated you will be cleaned up by January twelfth. The reason you have this resolution twenty-four, twenty twelve is because if you have less than a hundred thousand cubic yards of waste, and that's why I'm kind of relying a little bit on Alan's input involving what he did on Ian, by passing this, this gets us out of the twenty-four seven requirement in reference to the city and contractors working in the city of Lake Helen. It still means we have to have it cleaned up in ninety days. It just alleviates us from that mandate in terms of there. So small cities in Volusia County, and not only in Volusia County, but from Pinellas across the state are passing these resolutions, getting them to their county EOC. So at least we get out of the twenty-four hour mandate. Also, what you'll see in there is that, these are dollar amounts, and I have to tell you, I mean, they were scientific wild ass guesses, swags. One is that we are looking to try to finalize a contract with Crowder Gulf, which is the debris, debris management removal company that Volusia County has. You all voted a couple of months back to piggyback their contracts, so the contracts will be identical to the county's. So we're trying to get that, that worked up. And then the other is the company in here called Tetra Tech. They're like the monitor company, and they work with Crowder Gulf. Crowder Gulf is one of the largest countries, companies in the country. They're out of Alabama, and they do everything from California wildfires to here. If there's a good news on that, when I made phone calls with them today, the company's Florida rep lives in Dale Tummer. He is very familiar with Lake Helen, attends Market Park, many things to do with Lake Helen. Says he considers himself to be part of Lake Helen. And he said, well, we've got some tweaks to work out with the county and his company, but that may anticipate being able to have us taken care of with the debris pickup and the removal with the county. So I need the resolution tonight so that I can get that to Clint at EOC tomorrow, so that at least we get out of the twenty-four seven cycle. If we have any problem whatsoever in finalizing contracts with Crowder Gulf and Tetra Tech, then I'm gonna ask you all for a special meeting, and we'll have to step back. There are other companies out there, would you consider now a mandate on the forty-five? And I'll give you an example. Pinellas County, we're doing cleanup on Alina, and the state DOT got involved, and they doubled the amount of the contract. So they already sent a message to the rest of the state. And so if somebody's doubling your contract, where are you gonna go work? Pinellas County? So now they've set up a scenario where all of us are gonna have to look at what that rate is and try to keep our own contractors here in town. And the quantity of the state said, we don't care. That's your responsibility, and that's your fault. Governor said you'll be cleaned up by January twelfth. I don't know what the penalty is after that, and said, we hope you get your money back from FEMA. So if we get this going, hopefully I'll know by the end of the week, early of next week, if we're done with Crowder Gulf and the Tetra Tech, which then would be start of the overall cleanup. Because if you think about it, Orange Camp Road, Lakeview, and Frabak are county roads. So we won't be cleaning those up, those are county roads. So if they're going to be going through here cleaning those up, it seems to be that if we all work together, while they've got crews here in the city, it would be easier to get that coordinated. Now, our garbage would have to still be tracked and treated different, we would have to pay that fee. But these are all FEMA approved companies, and we'd be following the FEMA event, and so the likelihood of getting paid back would be greater. That said, there's no guarantee, and I'll use Ian as an example. We still haven't heard a no, we haven't heard a yes. I was at a meeting last week with EOC, and nobody in Volusia County has gotten money from Ian. And those who even use their FEMA contractors. So, you know, FEMA sounds good on paper, and they get two hundred fifty dollars out to people and snack cards and things like that. And when it comes to us, they're like an insurance company, and they seem to do everything possible to not pay the fine.
Did you give a memorandum from the governor stating that they will give no monies to the cities and municipalities whatsoever?
I, I would get it, that was the decree that came out, and this was the emergency director for the state of Florida.
Because I just heard him say that for every, for every dollar that we spend, that the state would pay back seven dollars on debris pickup.
Now, we were told today on this call with the state of Florida that there's no Florida money, that we are all dependent on following FEMA guidelines, and whatever we have to pay, you pay it, and hopefully you get back some money.
What is the consequences for not fulfilling that?
That I don't know, and I guess I'm gonna use the gentleman who spoke a little earlier. You know, failure's not an option. So one way or the other, we've got to get it done. So one way or the other, we've got to get it cleaned up. So either regular to get it wrapped.
They'll kickfully tell them out of the state of Florida.
A big bonfire.
Scott just asked a question, and Rick will tell you. I asked this after the phone call. If we just moved all of our stuff to Orange Camp, Lakeview, and Frabak, we're cleaned up. Then the state's probably like.
It takes the county two months to clean up those.
Yeah, well, but they.
Whereas regular, that's cleaned up fast.
I know, I mean.
It was a county micro.
Yeah, I mean, definitely. I mean, everybody's under the 90 day. And I will tell you, I met with Alan, who assisted this city and probably got Lake Helen cleaned up faster than anyone else in Volusia. And Alan has talked about what he would be able to do if we weren't able to go through that process. The only question I would have for the commission on that then is that we wouldn't waste our time chasing FEMA funds. That we would just focus on getting the job done and getting the city cleaned up. Because we went through all of that, all that documentation, all that, it's there. And.
They save the day.
And we're on our fourth FEMA round. Okay, so you don't even get consistency on who you were.
There are two, every rule that we, every rule.
Yeah.
Every rule.
And we have tried to back and document and provide, you know, what was there. But you don't have to follow FEMA. You can do it yourself and just say, we're not worried about it. And there are some communities that do that. I did that at mascot in 2017 because it took six months, and the city wasn't going to sit and wait for the county and our contractors to get that done. So, I mean, there are two choices. But before I'm ready to recommend going to Plan B, I at least would like to see if we get this finalized with these two companies that are FEMA-certified, have done previous work for Volusia County. And Volusia County says that in the past, they've been successful getting funds back.
Do you need to read the resolution?
Let me, I have one question. If we did not owe the county, how would we dispose of our debris?
Well, like the last time, if we go to the, what was just the city landfill? And then the only thing I need to check is on the burning.
Can't burn.
Well, there may be a little caveat in that because one of the questions today on the state line was burning and disposal versus transfer station. And the state didn't say no.
You can burn.
I think we just have to get the right permit with the DDP.
Yeah, but you also, DEP sent me an email, and you have to have one of those burner curtain things in order to get a burner.
Air curtain.
Yes. In order to get the permit. And I want to say another thing. I found out why FEMA first thing out of their mouth when they came here, where are your ashes? Those ashes have to be put in a specific container and be disposed of. And that FEMA pounded on that for, they're probably still pounding on it. They want to know where those ashes are at. So.
And let me stress too, they're talking debris. The state of Florida is not talking flooding.
Right.
One iota of flooding.
Right.
Every call we've been on, every city has been having the same stories that we heard here tonight. And what we've all been told, you're on your own. There's nowhere to pump the water. You had a thousand-year event. There's nowhere to pump the water. And so their focus is on debris pickup and removal, and the water's going to do what the water does.
Well, yeah, but I didn't realize we were talking about water.
No, no, I'm just saying with the focus, there's a lot of people thinking that there's going to be issues in reference to the flooding problem. There's no pumps coming from the city. There's no pumps coming from the county. There's nowhere to pump it to. So we're just focusing on the debris side. And we're just going to have to let the water, in what levels it does.
And that mandate has just changed a lot of things for us. Mandate has decided that you guys, by January, you got to get this stuff cleaned up. What that also does is that it puts us in competition. And whoever's going to clean up, they're king of the roost. Because you need us. You need to pick up people so they can write their own check. And that is going to keep the prices going up. Because now it's not about, well, I have a sympathy for Lake Helen because I used to go there or whatever, but now it's about a dollar a cent. The fact that we got the families that we have here that are in the city, that's going to do it. But how do we get this stuff by January, whatever the date is?
January 12th.
January 12th.
We're already 80 days or 88 and a half days.
Without a penalty, what is the penalty? You make a mandate.
Well, like Scott said, I think what I did was probably withholding federal funds.
So there you go. There's a penalty.
We don't know what the penalty would be, but what could they do if they could withhold state funds?
That's the question.
I mean, they're not going to say, if you don't do it, we're going to do it.
They're not going to say, don't do it. It'll be on the equal chain.
I'll find it, I'll find out tomorrow.
Thank you. So where we are with this going?
Resolution 2412, a resolution of the city commission of the city of Lake Helen, Florida, establishing a not to exceed price of 500,000 with Crowder Gulf for the provisions of debris hauling and services following Hurricane Milton, establishing a not to exceed price of 250,000 with Tetra Tech Incorporated for the provisions of debris monitoring and services following Hurricane Milton, and authorizing the city administrator to execute the saying and provide an effective date. This does not commit us to 500,000 to 250,000. Those were some estimates. I went high on there. I talked a little bit with Alan, and he gave me somewhere that we might be somewhere between the 10 and 15,000 tons, just based on Ian. There may be a little more on this one than there was for Ian. But to be honest, like Scott sent me a copy of Holly Hills. They had a million and they had a half million. So I just reduced them down, meaning that we're on a smaller scale. So it's not like we're tied into these monies. But this resolution gets us out of the 24/7 requirement. And then it's got my ability to work with George and Clint with the county and with, in reference to the two companies. And the fact that we had a positive call today with the representative from the company that's here locally. I'd like to think we can get that done. If there is a problem in doing that within the next week, I will let you know so that we can have a special meeting on if we need to go to Plan B. And see if Alan and his group can get that done, just with the understanding that, again, that might come out of ARCA, but it gets the city cleaned up and.
You got Halloween, though. Lots of safety.
Yeah. Cars can't see around it.
A lot of kids walk around just saying, can't swap this last year's.
Butler Express is coming too. We want it looking nice.
You said cancel Halloween.
I didn't say cancel Halloween.
I make a motion that we approve resolution 20 power dash 12.
We have a motion, we're in second. Want to move in second? All the favor? Aye. Aye, in your pose. So motion move. Okay, are we down to the positive decision for the one that we? I'm going to service out Lakeview occupation. Does anyone have any expert, expertise communication with anybody? Or no? No, no? Okay. Do you have to read this guy?
Nope.
Motion.
I make a motion that we approve 11A as president.
Motion. Second.
I'll second an applause that's based on the approval or recommendation from. It was A to P B.
As president.
Go move. Second.
My second.
Second, okay. All the favor? Is there anything you want to say?
No.
I'm sorry, is there anyone for the, for the other side? Thank you. Yep. All the favor? Aye. So move. All the favor? Come on, folks. We are now down to the commissioners' zone reports. Zone one.
Thank you. So I passed out some options for some holiday decorations. The first was at the last meeting, there are some garland-type structures and some lighted displays. There's also tonight, I included a picture of a lighted display that's a four-piece train. Since the Butler Express is the one that collaborated with the city and helped make the event successful, took care of the city in that way or in their flag, and also for July, kind of just a little one to our uniqueness here. What I'm looking to do tonight is consensus for staff to collaborate with Public Works and at the input of the CHU crew, since they're the ones assisting with this event, on getting some holiday decorations, not to exceed the amount we have, which is 6,000 roughly. I don't have the exact number in front of me, but it's roughly 6,000. The highest proposed that I have here is 35,299 plus tax. So a little more than half so that we can save a little bit and build up. There's a lighted display that's a walk-through display. That's the shape of the ornament. It would be nice in Lake Park or over at the Quastre Center and we can take this event here every year. And that decoration itself is $30,000. So we're going to have to do this a couple of times.
I'm sure it's going to get me through.
So that's why I'm not trying to spend the entire amount we have, but in order to show good faith to the folks that donated last year and came out and supported this event. I'd like them to see a little momentum and see that we are doing something with the money that they contributed. So that is, I'm just looking for direction. I guess consensus is what staff we need in order to collaborate with input from Public Works and the CHU crew.
What's the lead time on getting them?
I know that they said they could get it before Christmas. However, we were delayed some. It's so, I mean, I don't think that short of delay is going to make a difference.
So we have to bring it back to you, it's under Jim's personal authority? So I just want to verify that we've got something. We could go ahead and order it now and have it here? So we can get it out?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay.
I'm looking for staff to be able to spend the funds on something appropriate that ties into our history or our uniqueness. And is under the 6,000. I would say under 4,000, so we still have a little bit left over. Is there any objection to that commission?
No objection. The stories I'm watching, I got the fundraiser done for that, so by Christmas.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
I also would like the committee to look at the digital string lights that are done by, I think it's UFE and Gozy, that can be installed, they're year-round lights that are programmable from a cell phone app to the holiday, so you can change the light pattern, blinking pattern, flow pattern, everything on it, so based on a holiday. And they're about $300 for a hundred-foot string. Something else to look at for lighting up something year-round on a different holidays.
And the vendor that I was looking at does have a motion for that, so I have the pamphlet in my bag. So I can always give that to staff as well. Thank you very much. The next thing that I'm sure all of us are still thinking about is the flooding. And so I would like to propose that we direct staff to explore all the options that were presented to us tonight to alleviate the flooding issues that residents are seeing. If it is an option to pump the water, as the gentleman suggested, to use it, to cloud, to pearl. Hope that train worked. Sorry, my brain is shutting down. If we, if that's a possibility, that would be great. Or if we could pump it onto the city owned properties, if there are any options to alleviate the water within our purview. I think if we can direct staff to work on that.
We have an 11 o'clock team meeting with Wooder and Curd, the new engineering firm. They sent me a preliminary email mainly about High Street because that seems to be the most critical. The one negative that came out of it is that it's a private pond. So, but we set up an 11 o'clock tomorrow for Rick, I, and them to talk about some options.
Do we know that's a private pond?
No.
Because we used to get frogs in that pond before those houses.
Both pond engineering and Wooder and Curd, two separate emails. Because I sent them both messages to see what I would get back, or what was the way. Both emailed back that that is privately owned pond that is owned by the people.
375 West Bray.
Around the pond. So it's not a city public, but they said, let's set a call up and let's see what potential solutions and options there are. So I may, hopefully, we'll come out with something with that calling.
If that pond is harboring city stormwater, does that change this situation?
That'll be part of the discussion.
No, because an act of God, an act of God does not change the ownership of that thing. Rick tells me though that we have a basis like a tree falls. It's like if a tree falls from your neighbor's house onto your house, you're going to get a storm. It's an act of God, the neighbors not responsible for it.
But when the city lets somebody put those buildings, the pond is already there.
My microphone is dead. Sorry.
I said when the city allowed them to build houses around that pond in that hole, I think that makes the city liable. That's just my opinion, I'm not the attorney.
There's also, there's also the option of the city looking at interesting property to build retention ponds, stormwater retention ponds to put the water in also.
And I think that's a more permanent solution. Right now, with my goal of liberating this backup, we hurt folks who are hurting right now. Immediate, imminent issues that need to be dealt with. If there is something that the city can do to alleviate that in our responsibility, if we can handle that, I would like to see us do that. If it's not something we can do, it's not something we can do. But at least if we explore every option, every stone unturned, then, you know, that, that's, we can get to a point to talk about for suggestions and things. So absolutely, I'm on that.
And to have it, just to let you know, even before Milton was a storm, gained or aimed at us, Rick and I took Wooder and Curd to three areas around town. Pleasant Street, no, Pennsylvania.
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 Church.
Church. East Ohio. And this area. So they already were doing some pictures and some generals. So this was even before we had Milton come in. So, I mean, we were taking a proactive approach on that process, and then we got 16 inches of rain.
Right, I understand.
So maybe tomorrow after 1 o'clock, if there is something, either way that comes out of that, I will email the five of you.
Thank you.
The results.
And we still have roads that are, we've got to get them out to look at. Pennsylvania's partially collapsed on the side. We got East Ohio now that's collapsed.
We got East Ohio now that's collapsed. We've gotten repaired with steel plates. McKenzie right there as you went on, as you go from Lakeview to Lake Pearl McKenzie, that did before we had the storm. That let go, so we put plates there. So we've got plates there and East Ohio. And they're too funny. We've got a lot of things we've got to store them, also for the pipe across East Ohio. What we have to do to do it, you know, things like that. I think you could pump Jenny's house down to, towards I four because New York goes all the way down at the end. And there used to be storm, our stormwater went down through there to the I four um, thing. So if you wanted to pump that, you just have to have the pipe to go down to there, straight down Jenny's street there, but go off into there. I don't think it would affect anybody because it's lowering down now, it's been going down. For that, the other one, you have the daisy chain to get out.
Yeah, if you go down to East I four, that flows down.
It's McCorr's all place. Yeah, it's official McCorr.
And it goes down to like McKenzie, which is slowly receding.
Yes, it'll split and go a little bit there, probably a little bit that way. But the daisy chain, the only other way to get those pumps to get that, but it's the cost of pipe. You have to get the crossings for the people to be able to get out of their driveway, do all that. And I mean, it's just, it's, it's money. You can get a price, but it's gonna be money to get it done. But with them offering two pumps and all that, that's, that's like it. And we have one. So that's a pump. We have some, yeah, we have one big pump like they have.
So that means two, you mean another one?
No, he said they got, they can get two.
Oh, okay.
He can get two.
Eric could get two.
He can get two and we have one. It's just getting the pipe, enough pipe and those things to go down through there.
The other issue that will have to be done in the process is to daisy chain it like the guy had recommended. We'd have to get permission from the property owners to cross their properties.
Not on the road edge.
No, not on the road edge, but on some of the areas where he was talking about going to Lake Cloud and going to Lake Pearl. That's crossing people's property lines to get to those locations. So that would, that would have to get permission from. And then the other one of using the pond on the property south of John Street that was just purchased by that guy with the big pond down there. You'd have to get permission from him.
That's Jenny old pond.
It's overflowing into Daddy's.
That's going into the.
No, it's, we were there yesterday. It's low.
That is going into the deep creek area.
That goes right to his patio, right? Yep. It's gone down. McKenzie's gone down.
Does the city staff, does city staff need any direction from us in order to take that? Okay, then I dig this.
After talking with the engineers or whatever, we may have to go back because it's funding issue. Let's get to the one o'clock call tomorrow.
We have that hurricane.
Yeah.
So move forward.
I, I, thank you very much.
Um, first thing is the Massacham Center is having a winter clothing drive. They put the wrong date on their flyer. It wasn't ending yesterday, it's ending Saturday. So if anybody has any clothing, that anybody can donate winter clothing for kids and adults, um, they can drop it off at the Massacham Center between nine and noon on Saturday. They'd appreciate it. The other one's gonna require a vote from the commission that I will have to abstain from. But the American Legion has submitted a permit request and the American Legion is requesting a commission to waive the permitting costs and inspection costs for the permit to do our picnic area at the American Legion. Which started as a Boy Scout project and got approved, but now they're backtracking and saying they need a permit.
Is there any information on that?
No.
Okay.
Because a permit can't get approved until it gets paid.
This Saturday's event.
What?
Harvest dinner.
One object, one thing at a time.
Um, without any information, I don't feel good about voting.
Well, it's, it's gone down. It's the wooden fence that was installed by the Boy Scouts, the Boy Scout project. And the high top tables that were installed by the Boy Scouts. And then we had materials donated to put a sunshade thing over the picnic area. And we had plans on permanently installing the framework for that. But we got issued a code complaint. And so when we went to City Hall about it, they says, well, now it includes, everything has to be permitted. So we submitted their permit, but there's a hundred, I think a hundred and seventy-five dollar cost for the permit. Then the inspection fees for the inspector to come out and inspect it. So we're asking for those costs to be waived so we can get the permit done so we can start getting this project inspected.
I don't know, can I say something about this? Because I actually saw what you had installed and everything and I kinda thought it was cute.
I'm sorry, thank you.
It, it looked nice to me. My problem here is there's been so many structures put up in this town that people were not charged permitting fees. It was sort of like who you know, what you know, that kind of thing. But more than that, this is a military plot. You know, we, I think as citizens or especially as the commission should back our vets who have really given their all for us. And to, for someone to go and look at a structure that was already up and looked fine and then go make a complaint about it because there was no permit is absolutely insane to me. There was nothing wrong with it. And now this one is very, very small. Can, to have to come, take it all down, get a permit, to put it all back up again is, is.
I tell you, it's insane to me. Insane to me is the commissioner that knows the rules and decided to break them all and now wants to come here and ask the rest of the commission for forgiveness. Took a page out of Rick Bassett's book. And he used to always say, ask for forgiveness. Do what you're gonna do and ask for forgiveness afterwards.
Okay, well, we're not gonna just make a decision on this now because this is not something we can vote on.
Yes, it is.
But it is, and before we finish.
Let me finish talking about the item one inch in.
Before we finish.
The item that I brought up.
You brought something out for this.
That's right, and it's still my time to talk. So let me finish my talk.
Now, go ahead and keep talking then.
I will.
That's what, this is the calm here.
We did not bypass any process to try to get away with anything. We followed everything that we thought was right at the time. And we got permission from the permitting office to go ahead. We did not need a permit for having a fence installed. Then another Boy Scout came up and says, instead of putting picnic tables in there, let's put some high top tables. So they worked on the high top tables to install the high top tables. Those are anchored in the ground. Everything that is being installed is a permanent structure, not a temporary structure. Then we had some issues with the sun affecting the high top tables. So we says, well, let's see what we can do with a sunshade. We were gonna go and submit a permit to get a whole sunshade like they had at the Montessori School on Lakeview and at the Blake School on Main Street. And somebody says, well, I've got some framework you can have to save your thing. And another person says, well, I've got some old sunshade material you can have. And so we accepted those and we're setting up to see what they look like and how we can permanently install them there. And we figured all that out, but in the process, we, we got a complaint against it. We had to stop all the work and even as it is, except for the sunshade material, it's being allowed to take it down because of storms. But the, the thing is, is that it's the permit and everything has to go before the Historic Preservation Board before it comes to the commission. The only thing the legion is asking, which can't be voted on tonight, is to waive the fees for the permit and inspection costs so that the permit can go to the Historic Preservation Board. If it gets delayed another month, it's gonna keep on getting delayed, delayed, delayed until the permitting fees are paid. The American Legion is struggling just to pay its everyday bills. Our insurance is six thousand plus a year just for the building.
So we set up here and we pass judgment on homeowners in this town that are struggling just as bad and paying just as much in insurance and monthly house payments. And then we want to be forgiven for something like that? I don't think it's right.
The Lake For Better Living and the Legacy Group and people with the commission with a project to do a pavilion down at the lake and the city and absorb the permitting fees and inspection fees and the, I forget all the others they approved to permit.
That was the.
If one organization can do it, why can't another nonprofit organization that benefits the community also get the same recognition?
What is the cost of the permit fee?
Well, that from the.
It's a hundred and seventy-five dollars for the permit fee.
We'll pay for it.
Before, before we get to this point, before we get to this point, um, it, normally when we have a motion before the city.
A motion has not been made. A request has not been.
You're saying that a motion can be made, so my point is that there's someone who'd like to speak on it.
That's why, but I'm allowed to give my point in.
You've already given, you've already given your point. Pretty, the other two commissioners. So since I have a blue card here, um, would you, Todd Preston?
Todd Preston, three fifty-two, getting that. Uh, Mr. Eric, I'm very disappointed that you slid this in during your zone report. And I just wanna ask, why don't you just follow the rules that you push on everybody else? You're the vice mayor. Your legion is in the gateway corridor. This whole question is moved because you have to go to the Historic Preservation Board and get a certificate of approval for your design where you can ask for a permit. It's moved. Why don't you just follow the rules? That's it.
We are following the rules as we did. We went to the city and asked if we needed to get a permit or anything to be able to get this all project.
You know that you have to have a permit. You put up a fence, you put up permanent structures. You just said they're permanent structures.
I did not.
I do not believe you, sir.
What the permit requirements.
I do not believe you. I'm just saying.
It doesn't matter what you believe. I'm telling you, from my knowledge, I did not.
Well, you're obligated to uphold the same rules, regulations and laws that you push on everybody else in this town.
Ask me questions on.
I don't have any problems with what goes there as long as it's approved. It has to go to the Historic Preservation Board and has a, concept has to be approved. It's in the, it's in the gateway corridor.
Don't play, we haven't finished.
You have to follow the rules. How can you expect me or anybody else to abide by or follow the rules when you won't?
And neither are you.
You're already.
So.
I'm always out.
I'm saying, you're the vice mayor. You should follow the rules that you expect everybody else to follow. There are laws and there are rules, whether you like it or not. If you won't follow them, nobody else has a reason to follow them. And you, just because it's the legion, I'm a veteran too, okay? You think I don't like veterans? I do. But I'm a person that believes in the constitution and the rule of law. And I'm sick and tired of you guys and your good old boy network breaking the rules to benefit yourselves while you cram it down everybody else's throat. Follow the rules, go to the HPP, get your approval, then apply for a permit. The approval has to come back before this commission and be approved, just like we approved these other certificate approvals tonight. And you can't vote on it, okay? But just follow the rules. That's all I'm asking. Because you're breaking them right now and you're asking for forgiveness. And that is ethics one oh one and that is a violation.
Well, if you think I violated ethics or anything, go ahead and submit it. Because I did that.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, let me speak.
We went to the, admitted to the stand, stopping iron talk because it isn't time to talk and I don't give a damn what you're doing with that hammer.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, you can do the same thing you did at the Black Park when you punched me in the back when you were shooting. Yes, you did. And there's a witness right there that you did it.
Will you please have your time?
Now, we went to the staff of the city and asked them what needed to be done for this project to be done. They gave me the information that they had at the time and said that we did not need a permit or anything.
For a fence. All right.
That's not what it feels on the border of a property.
Listen, we need to, one of the things that we are supposed to be providing are order, decorum, personal and pertinent.
Not what people are giving the wrong counterbodies know. Because you interrupt me every time that I try to talk and I don't want to interrupt you.
I'm gonna take this plan. At the end of, at the end of the meeting, we have, we have zone reports. Each zone's report is able, commissioner is able to speak. That is it. It's not up for a vote. It's not up for consideration. You get to speak.
And you allow a citizen to come in and interrupt my speaking when there is no citizen report on a commission, on a commission's report? So you violated our own protocol. I've also got one more issue I gotta talk about.
I'll give you my time.
Thank you.
There have been several attacks on by Facebook trolls. There is also those who want answers and being fed lies by those trolls. I am accused of the causing and trying to rid our current and past administrators and staff. There have been statements that I am against our current staff and administrator. This is far from the truth. I do not interfere with the staff. It violates our charter. And the administrator and I work well together. I go through the administrator for anything related to city business. If it concerns any event forms or payments, I go through Roxanne or Erin. If I have questions about a code, I go through Dylan. I probably should have, should take everything through the administrator. Sometimes he's not there. He may be at another meeting or a doctor's appointment or family meeting. I go through the administrator if it concerns asking the staff to do anything. That is what our charter says I'm supposed to do. During past commission meetings of July, August, September, the mayor, Vernon Burton, has been on a crusade to use his time position to create problems, accuse citizens of wrongdoing and create dissension in the community. He will start this presentation with a statement about unity and then create division by attacking citizens. He will talk about teamwork and then attack those he has on the team. He then closes the meetings and no one can counter his false statements. Vernon Burke wants to create a racial discrimination issue about the hiring of Roxanne Goodman. All he has to do is research the circumstances of the issue to see there is nothing involving racial discrimination. So let's examine the circumstances of this event. The Facebook trolls and supposedly do-gooders in the community make accusations. make accusations against those trying to prove Lake County without providing proof. The proof of my statements are in the city charter, the policies, emails, and meeting minutes. The mayor stated that he did not know any documents that indicated anything other than a rhetoric that he kept using. He has been a civil servant for 12 years and apparently does not know what the city charter or policies are. He does not consider what the problem is about the hiring of Roxanne Goodman. It is about the process used to hire her. Our charter states that the commission retains responsibility to hire and fire employees. Section 7B3, retaining responsibility for hiring and termination of employees, evaluations in writing, the city administrator's job performance at the end of the initial six months and probationary period at least 12 yearly thereafter, or at least yearly thereafter. The only way this can change it is if the commission approves it. This is where the minutes from January 14, 2021 comes into play. The motion by Commissioner Rick Bassett states to let our current administrator hire the help he needs. If that's two people at fourteen dollars per hour for 30 hours a week on temporary basis. Lee Evans added, "You give me the authority to hire and fire so I can start tomorrow," of which Commissioners Rick Bassett and Jim Connell said they would. Our attorney, Scott Simpson, our administrator and commissioners commented that this is a part-time with no benefits. In additions, our policy manual states a temporary employee is an employee filling a temporary position for a special project or other work of a temporary nature that will not exist beyond six consecutive calendar months or, and is not renewable. Upon approval, city commission temporary employees may be exceed six months when needed to replace or supplement employees. During the commission workshop on August 23, 2023, Administrator Lee Evans requested a consensus from the commission to allow him to hire a temporary employee to fill the city clerk vacancy under the same guidelines previously approved by the commission. This is stated above from the February, or January 14. On August 25, Lee Evans emailed the commission, candidates Linda Nenada and Vernon Burton, the department heads, stating that Roxanne Goodman was hired today as a temporary employee and that I provided a salary of seventy thousand dollars. Ms. Goodman will start on Monday, have all benefits normally enjoyed by all employees. That is not a temporary employee. This was done in violation of city charter and guidelines given in 2021. At the commission meeting in September 14, 24, 23, I brought this issue to the commission's attention and for about the fifth time, I made a motion to terminate Lee Evans' employment for another violation of authority. The motion died for a lack of second. Vice Mayor Rick Bassett stated he had a way to correct this problem and motioned to hire Ms. Goodman full-time. This was second and it passed on a vote of four to one. Rick Bassett did this because he had to overcome a conflict. After a meeting a couple months prior, he had, he made a comment to me that he would support the termination of Lee Evans if he had any more violations. He had made, he may have thought that his motion would remove this conflict. It did not, it only confirmed the commission's complicity in, with the administrator. I sent an email to the Florida Commission on Ethics about the issue and I have never received a response from them. Was Roxanne Goodman properly hired? This is left up to interpretation. She was hired in a political manure and she did not go through the normal hiring process usually conducted by the Lake County Administration. On another note, after Jim Gleason was hired, I met with him and expressed my concerns about Roxanne's hiring. I told him that I would leave it up to him. If he felt she needed to go, I would back him. If he thought she was doing the work he expected of her position, I would accept that also. And I have never interfered with the work that they have done together. Mayor Burton does not have all the information and relies on false details produced by people who create dissension in the community. Hopefully he will start checking his sources. We have too many problems that need to be addressed instead of constantly debating things that have occurred in the past. Use of past as an educational tool to prevent it from happening again.
My turn?
Yes, your turn.
You didn't get a, so you're saying you didn't get a response back from Tallahassee?
No, I did not.
I can swear, I did record through the best, I got some back, but I have to check that. Saying that what was done was done, leaves no longer here and there's nothing they can do about it. As far as this Facebook account, it has taken up way too much city time. Commission meetings, emails constantly to the, to City Hall. We don't monitor Facebook and we can't control people. We can't even do what we're supposed to do for the city. And now we gotta worry about Facebook? That's just ridiculous. Like you said, drope a thicker skin. Because God only knows the practice that's been said about me on Facebook, but I don't cry about it here.
I do have a.
You'll better talk, please.
I'm answering.
No, I'm just saying you need to grow one. Anyways, now, to what I really wanted to talk about tonight. I wanna know, when we had this screw-up about our budget and our tax rate, the vote wasn't right and now we're in trouble with the state. Who would have the emotion to know this?
That wouldn't have been known until after the vote we went to enter online to the state portal. That's when it was known on the 27th.
Oh, there was, Zach doesn't know this?
Well, Zach's gonna have to defend that question himself when he's not here.
And Scott, you wanna weigh in?
I became aware the Friday after your meeting. Jim contacted me after he went to enter the portal.
But you didn't know when the vote was cast?
No, I wasn't there.
Oh, you weren't here. Zach was here though, wasn't he?
No, I was.
I'm pretty sure Zach was.
No, Zach was here, but it's when you go and enter really.
No, but they should know. I talked to two former employees of this city, didn't even tell them what the problem was. They knew what the problem was before I even said it. So what I'm saying is, Zach is our tax guy. He should know what has to happen for something to pass through the state. And that's just my opinion, I don't know. Second thing I would like to know, would anybody here be interested in holding a workshop to discuss maybe having a moratorium on building in this town? You?
I made a motion to do it one time and I got shot down.
Do what?
I made a motion one time to the building, a moratorium, and I got shot down.
I don't think I was on that commission.
I'm agreeable to discussing it.
Okay, we need to hold a workshop, okay? Just the only thing to say on that. That would not affect anybody who has an application.
Exactly.
You cannot stop someone.
Yeah, yeah. So, alright, so we need to do a workshop.
Thank you. Special commission meeting, if you close.
That's true, special commission meeting. Well, we really have to discuss the ins and outs first.
You do, and also the moratorium on building aren't considered zoning ordinances, so there's special notices. You have to go through the whole land value, you have to go through the PLDRC for a review recommendation, two readings before the commission and a special notice.
So, okay, so we were through the workshop and then.
Workshop would be stuff.
Okay. I guess I'm done, I think I did enough damage tonight.
Well, I sit here and I listen to my colleague here and the one thing that we have issues with comes from some of the meetings that we have and we want people to show or provide at least a decorum. When we up here don't show that same respect for one another and it translates into things that are beyond. Roger's sit here and made a number of accusations that have no basis in truth, have no foundation, but he can say them. When the last meeting, I was making a comment, he doesn't want to be interrupted, but he loudly calls me a liar. This is a meeting, this is a commission meeting. He likes to talk loud and that becomes, I guess, his way of communicating. It's not necessary. I'm sitting right here, I've not been in this city on this commission. I've been in civil service for actually a lot longer than I've been working here. The fact of the matter is that... The fact of the matter is that we try very hard to do the work for this city and for these people. Everybody here puts in a piece. Roger says I like to talk about teamwork. It is necessary. There's no way you can get around it. If you don't have teamwork, then nothing works. If you don't have respect for any, any of the people sitting up here, have respect for the people out there. You are in a situation where you are now, as a vice mayor, you are coming before the city commission to ask for a special exception. Under normal circumstances, the veterans, post, and anything else connected with it, in a proper, in a proper perspective, it could be, there's not gonna be any yellow blue cards.
You want to talk?
Well, there's not gonna be any. At some point, we have to cover to the point. This can keep going on and it shouldn't. It should not.
It's alright, I'm proving a point.
As long as I've been sitting on this commission, every, every commissioner that has his own report, at the end of that report, that's the end of the meeting. Shouldn't, we, we let it go, I brought Mr. Todd up. If I keep going on to this, this is just gonna get stupid that we're here at 11 o'clock having a conversation like this. At some point in time, you could have just come to me as a man. Didn't have to be anything that would be a violation. It did not have to be anything in violation, it just means I'm a man. I'm gonna leave this alone right here. The one thing that we did say after that meeting, I asked you, "Why did you call me a liar?" And you said, "Because you're talking about things that is not true." I said, "What do you mean?" And he says, "I went to the AG's office, the Attorney General's office." I said, "Did you get a finding?" He said, "Get a finding?" I said, "Well, just because you make an accusation, if there's no determination in it, you can't just go on the fact I made an accusation, so I must be correct and everybody else is a liar." If you made an, if you made a, if you made a request to the AG, and I read your request, I read your request, and to me, well, that's another story. But the fact of the matter is, the AG did, did the AG give you a report? And that's not a question, this is rhetorical. Did the AG give you a finding? Did the AG uphold what you claimed to be? If you didn't, then why would we have this conversation? We need to do the people's work. We had, people come here with issues that we are not addressing because of this pettiness. It's a shame. It's a shame. I think I got a lot thicker skin than maybe most of you know or even consider. Fact of the matter is, I don't really keep, need to keep giving facts. But I really wish you would respect at least Roxanne, at least you would respect the commission, at least you would respect the citizens. Because they appointed us here to do the city's work, not to get our egos out in front of us. And that's something that I can't, I can't legislate that. That's something you're not doing, you know? I'm not here to fight with you, Roger. I'm not here to fight with you, Roger.
Can we have, excuse me, can we have a point of order here?
Point of order is that at the end of the commission meeting, each one of us gets to speak. And at this point, I'm finished speaking and I'm gonna end the meeting.
You did ask some questions and ask some questions.
I said, I said rhetorical.
You're lying.
You didn't do the word rhetorical.
I only sent my request to the board of deputies. How did you get a copy of my request?
They're calling records reports, Roger. You're a jerk. No, I didn't, I didn't even talk to her. I have this request, the records request for anybody, not just one person.
Oh, it will come out. It will, you can sit there and say that about people.
What are you talking about?
Everything you sit there and say, what did you leave me? Forty-two minutes y'all sat there and dashed me and didn't allow me to say a word. Sure he is. Pray dude, just pray. Right? Try being me.